The preliminary matter, this is Adam Burney, Land Use Director. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Mr. Allison.
I'm here.
Mr. Cole. Okay, Mrs. Bertram?
Here.
Mr. Brenner?
I am here.
All right, Mr. Cole?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you can hear us? Okay. So, good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, and this meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely. Since you're all sitting at home, you already know this. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance of the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus, and steps communities can take to prevent the spread, and all town facilities are currently closed to the public. This is new. Again, starting today, town offices are open by appointment only. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded to the public, and so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting of the Planning Board, it is being conducted by Zoom video conference, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Using any internet-enabled device, smartphone, tablet, or computer, please go to zoom.us and enter the meeting ID number. Or if you are unable or unwilling to connect by internet, you can call in. The number is 888-475-4499. The meeting ID for this meeting is 861-187-68002. Please note the meeting is being recorded, and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks can see your screen. They can see anything that you post. So please make sure not to screen share or broadcast anything you wouldn't want saved in perpetuity. With that, I will turn it over to the Chair to begin the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Adam. So we are calling to order at 6:33. And our first item of business is public comment. Is there anyone in the public that has a desire to make a comment? Do we see any hands?
I'll jump in here, Mr. Chair. Again, I just want to put out there that town offices, which had been open from 10 to 2, Monday through Thursday, are now closed to the public without an appointment. So you can still meet with staff. We are still working. We are available by phone and email. You just can't come and walk directly into the building. You need to have an appointment.
Thank you for that. Is there any further public comment? No hands?
No hands.
Okay. Can I see that? I'm sorry to keep.
I can make you host, and that would be how you see it.
Oh, that's it? Okay. No, I'm comfortable if you're comfortable.
If you would like me to keep doing it, it's fine. It's not an issue.
Very good. So our next item is A&R Plans, two. The first one is 318 and 384 Howard Street. And is that Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Want me to speak, Mr. Chairman?
If you'd like to, sure.
Oh, again, we met three weeks ago, or we had a video Zoom meeting here three weeks ago. And the board asked me to get a letter or an agreement that I had with the Haley's at 384 Howard Street to verify that I do have permission to work in their favor and my own. And that was brought into Adam the next day. I think that's all the board was looking for. If not, I'll stand corrected, but I think that's all that we had to do for this meeting for tonight.
I think additionally, the board had questions how it was originally approved. I did send around the deeds from back in 2008. Mr. O'Brien had purchased the entirety of the property, and he did own it through the initial approvals. It appears that it was sold at a time while the property was in court, and it did include an agreement as part of the purchase, which again was sent around with that deed, indicating that Mr. O'Brien would complete that transfer at the end of the approval process.
Okay. Well, I'll open it up to the board. Apparently, everything is in order.
I don't have any concerns, Mr. Chairman, so I would make a motion to approve the A&R as requested.
Is there a second for discussion, or?
I would second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Mr. Cole?
Yeah, if I could just add, and I don't know that it honestly makes much difference. I think the intent is here for things to get organized, but just as a matter of process, it sounds to me like at the time that this whole subdivision went through final site plan approval, Mr. O'Brien did not own the land that's being subdivided currently. And again, I don't think it makes material difference, other than the fact that the plans that we signed, whatever it was a year or so ago, depicted property that he did not own at the time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's Kevin O'Brien again. I didn't own any of the property out there at the time. The only piece I owned was what was considered the Levine property, which was 50 acres of the 200-odd plus minus acres. So just because this one I didn't own, I did own the house next door at 318 Howard Street, but I did not own all the 150-odd acres that the Arrows owned. Plan had to be approved. It had to be put on record, and then I closed with them a year ago, a year ago this past September. So quite frankly, the majority, probably 75% of the property I did not own, I had under agreement.
But I guess my point remains, this land that we're dividing currently was not owned or under agreement.
But it was. There was an agreement with the Haley's that they were going to deed that piece of property back to me when I sold it to them five years ago.
But that's not a purchase and sale.
I'm not going to act like I'm a lawyer, but my lawyer has told me that that is a valid agreement. It doesn't have to be in the form of a purchase and sale.
Okay, well, like I said, at the end of the day, it just, we've had issues with this property. And, you know, I clearly remember plans being presented in front of us that took away all of the town land. And so forgive me for placing extra scrutiny here, but there's been a track record of things not being quite right in certain situations. And so again, I mean, it's a few thousand square feet. There was an agreement in place, but it just, it muddies the water.
Well, just to clarify, let me ask you a question, okay? You say there's land that's been taken away from, that was being taken away from the town. Please explain that to me, because I've been working on this for 13 years. So I'm the only one that's been dealing with it. So explain to me, so I understand, what are you talking about with land being taken away from the town?
When we did the final subdivision approval, there was land negotiated for access to the town forest. That was depicted on a plan that was approved by the board. When we were presented the plan for signature, that land was removed, and the plan was reverted back to a much previous version. So if we had executed the plan, the town would have had to go through litigation to clear up the discrepancy, because what was presented to this board did not represent what we approved, plain and simple.
No, I don't think it's plain and simple. I had been dealing with this for 13 years. I have always, always granted access to that 350 acres in the back. Okay? I don't have a lawyer sitting here talking to you that his client did it. It's me, okay? So I'm the one that has always, always given you access to that property. I think it's foolish that that property is sitting out there unaccessed. I know not necessarily this board, but I know other boards have talked about getting this 15-acre strip to the right of this property for access. You're going to have to go down, and then it ends at Pond, where I own my property out in the back. You still don't have access to that. I know the bracket property has been talked about to the left-hand side of the property. So never, so never once have I ever taken that back, and I didn't take it back. And I agreed to give access to that property, and I'm agreeing that I will do a parking area for that. It does not make sense to come through my project and just dump cars out there to do whatever they want to do. There's got to be some organization to it, and I don't want the people that buy from me to have to deal with that. So I don't know if that's, I'm not trying to change your mind, but I just want to clarify that I have always given the access to that piece of property.
Okay, Tanner, I think we understand your point. The wrong set of my LRs were presented to us to sign. That's above and beyond the scope of what we're dealing with right now. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion about the A&R before us? Okay, hearing done. I'll take a roll call vote. All in favor, Mr. Cole?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Bertram?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
And I don't believe Mr. Torgerson is with us?
He is not.
And an eye for myself. Thank you. 250 Howard Street. Is that also Mr. O'Brien?
No, it's not.
Okay, very good, Mr. O'Brien.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank the board, and I'd like to also wish you all a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season.
Great, you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. So 250 Howard Street. Oh, that's the, okay. So are the two prospective buyers?
They are, Ms. Newcomb and Mr. Normiden.
Are they actual buyers or prospective buyers?
I'll let them.
Very good. Welcome.
Hi, and good evening. I'm Joel Normden. This is Sarah Newcomb. We are the individuals that have actually purchased 250 Howard Street and have gone forth with the process for the A&R to donate the back section of property to the town, as agreed upon with the tripartite agreement that we originally signed with the town. I believe in front of you guys have all the documents for the A&R. It's really pretty simple. The back section of property, approximately three acres, possibly a little bit more, has been sectioned off with respective bounds as originally agreed to being set underneath the tripartite agreement. And the remainder of the lot would be for a single-family home that we're looking to build on the property.
Excellent. Well, let me welcome you to Lunenburg, and thank you for this gift. I don't imagine anybody has any, well, I'll open it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I just want to thank the purchasers of this property for being, for, the Open Space Committee had actually recommended that we execute our right of first refusal as a community on this property. And I'm very happy to say that the buyers were willing to work with the town to retain property, to allow connectivity between conservation land, and also achieve the construction of a new home. So I want to thank them for working with the community.
Yes. Thank you, Paula. Sorry.
Oh, that's all right. I was just going to make up on the infamous tripartite agreement. Okay, I don't think anybody has any issues with this. Hearing done, I think we're ready for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the A&R plan for 250 Howard Street.
There are second? Second from? Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor, Mr. Cole?
Hi.
Mrs. Bertram?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
And an eye for myself. Excellent. Well, congratulations. Again, welcome to town, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate all your help.
Certainly. So next on our agenda is a waiver request from site plan approval for 88 Massachusetts Avenue. Oh, you guys are welcome to stay, or you're free to go, I guess? So do we have a representative for 88 Massachusetts Avenue?
We do.
Sorry.
Oh, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stacy Halkeakis, and this is my husband, Bill Halkeakis. We're the new owners of the property on 88 Mass. Avenue as of July of 2020. Do you want me to continue?
Welcome, please, yeah. Just give us a little explanation of what you're doing here.
So basically, we purchased this property, we actually started the purchase process like in March when COVID first hit, and then the Mackeys were kind enough to let us wait to actually do all the paperwork in July. So we purchased this property, obviously with the intent of fixing it up and making it a nice retail development in the town of Lunenburg. We own another retail building on the corner of Electric Avenue and 13. I think it's Waylam Road in Lunenburg that houses currently Lunenburg Liquors and Presto Pizza. So basically, we purchased it and went to the zoning, we went to zoning and got permission to separate the space that is currently vacant to make it three spaces instead of the one space that was previously occupied by Grand Rental Station. We got approval for that back, I believe, in October. Everything has been registered. And of course, the next phase was now with you, the Planning Board. We met maybe a month, maybe six weeks ago with Adam and spoke about what we could do. And we were informed that we could possibly get a waiver for slight site plan approval, since the building has been in existence for a long time. So of course, we have since had it paved. A lot of exterior stuff has been done to make the property look good. And due to the fact, according to your equation, that we thought that the parking was more than adequate, that we decided that if it were possible, we would be very gracious if you would allow this, as far as parking spaces go. We have actually also currently leased a section of land from the Mackeys in order to make it so that all the parking is valid. Beyond that, if you have any questions, I don't know if I've addressed everything that you guys need me to. Any questions, I would gladly address.
Okay. Well, if anybody on the board wants to jump in, I'll open it up. Okay. So it looks like you've got two full spots and almost, you've got some parking that's, looks like it's not on the property?
Correct. When the gentleman, after the paving, there was a line specialist that came in. I guess he wasn't too much of a specialist, because when we went back with it with Adam, those two lines are on the street that don't count, but those are not counted in the numbers that we have there.
Okay, so my understanding of site plan approval is it doesn't necessarily matter how long the building has been there, but it's for change of use. Is that correct, Adam?
Correct. The requirement, what triggered site plan approval for these folks is they went and got a a use approved through the zoning board for a, I think Shopping Plaza is the name of it, under zoning. They went from a three-unit building to a five-unit building that is greater than 5,000 square feet, which triggers a special permit from the zoning board in order for use. And in site plan, it requires that if you change the use or if you were to need special permit approval for use, it requires site plan approval. In the past, the board has looked at existing buildings that have vacant space and are either changing use or have been granted a special permit for a use as eligible for a waiver in circumstances where there isn't a significant change to how the building is being used. In speaking with, I'm going to attempt to say her last name, and speaking with Stacy, I'll just stick with that. She is not altering the general character of the way the building is being used, but because of the additional spaces, if you'll remember, Grand Rental Station was a gigantic open space, almost 4,000 square feet, and there's not a lot, I mean, that's kind of an odd retail size. It fits that use very well. But in chopping it up, you make the, you create the ability to have more options for who you rent to. In our discussion, it sounds as if it will be, the parking is calculated on these being retail spaces, which is slightly different than what Grand Rental is, but well within the same ballpark. So I suggested that since she wasn't making any exterior alterations to the building, that she approached the board and said, "Look, we're rehabbing the building. We're looking to get new tenants. We have this parking as it stands that services these four units in the front for retail. Would you consider us as someone who could be eligible for a waiver?" Again, this is something that was done for the pet store at 10 Mass. Ave. It was done for the coffee shop and the glass repair business at 39 Mass. Ave. I could probably come up with one or two others where the board has looked at existing spaces being reused. Actually, the remainder of the plaza at 10 Mass. Ave was done prior to the pet store, where the board looked at it and said, "Yes, you have existing facilities. You're not changing the exterior. We find these to be adequate within the bounds of what you want to do there."
So I believe it was 10 Mass. Ave where we didn't waive site plan because it was changing from a stove shop to an auto body or a cleaning detailing or something? Wasn't that 10 Mass. Ave?
It was 10 Mass. Ave. I'm almost positive that there was a waiver issued. I think there was some back and forth, and it was not a one-meeting approval, but I don't think the board required them to do a full site plan filing.
I'm pretty sure we did, and it was hand sketches, but it was just basically for the parking, I thought, but so.
And it was. It was similar to this. It was not a full site plan filing. It was a waiver with a plan registered for where the parking was, and that was in response to the gentleman who wanted to do the used cars there. And there was a question as to how much parking he had, how far it was from the street. And I think he went back and forth over two or three months, but ultimately ended up granting him the waiver.
Okay, so we're looking, we're looking at a retail with five spaces. We don't know any of the five occupants. I understand that there has been an interest expressed for one of these units?
Well, two of the units are currently occupied with the long-term businesses, the barber shop and the pottery place. And in speaking with Stacy, the unit one was not included in calculations due to the interest of the retail cannabis facility and the fact that they may have different parking necessities and that the owners were looking to move forward on units two and three specifically.
Okay, so they're calling it a retail, but I mean, barber shop is a service, is it not? It's not a retail?
That's correct. Their parking calculations are the same per Section 6.1.
Okay, I'm just, and forgive me for my reluctance, but I am reluctant on granting a site plan waiver on two existing tenants, two unoccupied, and one proposed. And the one proposed is going to be a whole nother can of worms.
And I think from my perspective, I think the board could exclude unit one due to the long-term potential approval process coming forward in that. And that was certainly the conversation that I had with the property owners.
Are we able to segment individual building spaces and a site from site plan review? That doesn't make any sense.
I think you could condition your waiver to include any occupation of unit one requiring a return to the board.
All right, well, how about I make a suggestion? Can we, can we condition the waiver on reapplication for the other two spaces to be, when they find a potential user? Because I mean, Pilates or some service that draws in 20 to 30 people?
So as of now, I'm sorry, can I interject? As of now, and again, it's been a process, so I can't guarantee that as of yesterday, both of the tenants that, the prospective tenants are in, as of now, unit two is a supposed to be proposed pizza place with mainly pickup and delivery. They are, we have, so we have an architect now working up on the plan for the building inspector. That unit two will only have four tables. So this gentleman's main business proposition is that he just wants to do mostly delivery, which is currently with COVID, what's happening in this world with pizza anyway.
Right.
The center store, which is unit three, is a young lady that wants to open up a nail salon. So those are the, for those two, just so you can have an understanding, as far as yesterday was concerned, they're still on board. Now, am I going to say that tomorrow they're going to be on board? No. But you can more than definitely make it a condition that they need to come back to you if those change.
Okay. So two and three are currently unoccupied, and those are potential new people?
Correct. They're not just unoccupied. The building hasn't even been separated. So those divisions that you see are still in the process to go to the building inspector. The architect is working on all the mechanical and electrical and all that stuff.
Okay, and unit four is what, and five?
Unit four is currently a barber shop, and unit five is currently a pottery shop that have been there from the, I think, the onset of the building.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think, Mr. Chair, you can make that condition. If I, if you were to ask my opinion, I would say it would be probably easier to condition that the use fall within the parking calculation category that was used to account for the spaces.
Okay.
So now, you know, if we were to go and we were to use 6.1 Other Service and Retail Establishments Parking Areas Exclusive of Driveways. uh, 6.1, um, other service and retail establishments, parking areas exclusive of driveways. So, excuse me, that would cover nail salons, hair care, um, retail, all of those type of things. Uh, the restaurant would fall under a different, which is one parking space for each table or booth and one's parking space for every two counter seats and adequate spaces for delivery vehicles. So with four tables, they would be required to have four spaces and even if you consider they're a, a delivery only business and require them to have six spaces for delivery drivers, um, that would be 10. Uh, and then the remainder is based off of, uh, square footage of unit to square footage of parking lot, not to any specific, uh, uh, parking stall count.
Okay. Um, hm, and, uh, just to be a stickler, the, uh, the aisle width, um, to the right-hand side of the building from Mass Ave is 14 foot, five inches? I don't believe that's adequate for two-way traffic.
It is one-way traffic only would be what that would fit into.
But they have to come and go from those 12 parking spaces in the back.
You can go from the back, from this, from the left. See where it says 10% snow storage? So that, back there, you can go drive back there. Obviously, there's not, it's not very drawn very well back here. Um, so behind unit one, there's more than adequate space to go to the other 12 parking spaces. It wasn't the intent for them to drive from the front. The 12 parking spaces in the rear, we, we kind of designated more for the employees so that they wouldn't take up the front parking spaces. So basically, if you drive, um, I'm gonna hopefully, to the left of the building where it says 27 parking spots, if you drive up there, you can drive right behind unit one to those parking spots. There's actually the potential for more parking spots behind unit one. We just didn't think we need them, so they weren't drawn in there.
So there's, there's a couple of things there then. You could have it signed as employee parking only. And I think with the limited use like that, then the 14 and a half feet would be adequate. Uh, or you could put one-way directional signs. But however, if you did do employee parking only, then those 12 spaces in the rear would not be able to, uh, facilitate customers.
Are you saying that there are necessity?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just in, in the numbers, in the numbers game here, because that, that's basically what we're dealing with here. We've got, we've got bylaws and, and we have to stick to the numbers that are in the bylaws. And there's accessibility issues as well. So if, if it in fact can be accessed through a one-way pattern.
We can definitely do that as a one-way. That's not a problem. If that would fix it, that would be definitely an easy solution for us.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm just hashing over the, the alternatives here. Um, uh, I, basically, I'm thinking out loud. The, um, yeah, the aisle width is not adequate for two-way traffic is the only thing, the 14 foot.
Absolutely not. No, there's no room there for two-way traffic.
Um, and if you limited it to employees only, I think that the limitation would be adequate to facilitate the potential two-way traffic, because if they're employees, they would beware of it, right? Um, but then that might affect your parking calculations. Because if they were not for customers, I believe the required parking is, uh, well, it depends on which category. Um, retailer service. I'm not sure.
So what I calculated, and, and again, that, um, section, I believe it's 6.1, uh, was a little, it's, it's a little tricky. And, um, so what I calculated for the 4,063 square foot, which is unit two through unit five, the, the amount of square footage that we would need, because it's a times three equation, I calculated, and I could be wrong on this, but this is my, you know, uh, from what I understood from the equation, would need 12,189 square feet. Now, if you were to, gonna take the 23,469, deduct for the snow, you're at 20,836. Again, the question that you're posing right now is if those 12 spots are le- are less than approximately 8,000 square feet. And I don't know if we can do quick math on that to figure that out, but maybe we can.
Well, it's, it's not only that. I mean, it, this needs to be year-round. So if, if we've got three feet of snow and the whole back of the building is being used as snow storage, that's not passable by vehicle.
I thi- and I apologize for this, and I was tempted not to give you this plan, um, because I think it might just sh- show it that it's not accessible if the snow goes there, but it actually is, because again, like I said, um, there's more than enough clearance even with a snow storage. Like I said, I think that it's not, um, depicted correctly in the plan. And I wish I had the other one, but I do not right now.
Okay, well, um, again, I'm just one of, well, tonight, four people. And, uh, and I'm the only one who's spoken on this, so, um, why, why don't we hear from the other three board members? Anybody?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would agree with the concerns that you've identified, um, and, you know, it's showing 703 square feet for snow storage. And if we, uh, that basically goes back into another 1,930 square feet of snow storage. And I, so I'm not quite sure that there is enough room to make that one way. Um, so I'd like to see that delineated on a plan. Um, and I guess I'm not really clear on what it is that we're doing a site plan on. Are we doing it simply on the two units that exist and then the other two will come back when they're occupied? Or how would this be structured?
I would think you would structure it on the four units in the front, to the two units exist. And then it would be based on, uh, limiting these two units to, uh, whatever use, uh, the owners are, are putting forth, whether it's retail and restaurant or, or, or two, two levels of retail.
I guess that would go back to the own, the owners. What is it that you would be requesting?
We are requesting to be allowed to put in right now, and, and not right now, because obviously we still have to deal with, um, with separating the building. So we're still in the process. But we were under the, understanding that once we finish with zoning, y- the planning board would be next on the list of people to, um, to come to. So we're coming to you and asking permission th- so that when the unit two and unit three are separated and ready to be opened up as businesses, that we would have approval with the current parking situation to allow that to happen.
But what kind of, what kind of businesses?
So unit two is supposed to be a pizza place. And unit three, a nail salon.
Okay, and you mentioned four tables for the pizza place and Adam.
No more than four for the pizza place, and that's on the, uh, architect's plan too, because it won't work any other way. And there will be no counter seats. So there's not gonna be like an, a, a counter like at a breakfast diner where you can sit. His counter will be strictly a pickup counter.
Okay, and when you say four tables, Adam, how does our, our parking requirements fit for, you know, four tables? I'm assuming it would be based on the number of seats at that table, but.
It's done by table.
It's done, okay, so how, how many?
It would be one space per table.
And unit three is going to be a nail salon?
Okay, which would be service, which would be the, um, one, for every one square foot of floor area, you need three square feet of parking area. It's not, doesn't mean parking space, it just means three square feet of blacktop. That isn't the, uh, immediate driveway adjacent to the street.
How do we merge those two, um, those two numbers between needing a set number of parking spaces for the restaurant unit and for the other units that are retail? What's the, uh, what's the correct method? Um, like, do we just subtract the square footage of the sp- of the spots required for the restaurant? Are we supposed to give enough access for them as well in that square footage? Because.
Uh, no, what I would say is since it calls it out by a parking space specifically, um, so if it were, let, let's say we decided 10 was the, the adequate number with delivery and tables. We would take 10 parking spaces away and the, um, the 1,800, uh, yeah, the 1,800 square feet of ground area that goes with that would, would disappear. Or is it 10, what, uh, 18,000? I don't know. I'm a planner, not a mathematician. But when, whatever the, the square footage of those parking spaces would be subtracted from that ground area and the remaining units would have to fit into that ground area.
We don't have to give any, uh, we don't have to include any of the, um, the blacktop needed to access those spaces.
Not per the way that the definition or the, the parking calculation is written. Uh, and they're sharing aisles and access, so, y- uh, you know, it, it's frankly, it's a little overkill because the units of three, four and five, if you were to do the calculation, you're calculating access aisles three times, uh, when they're all sharing a facility.
I think I can shed some light on this too, um, is previously our, our calculations were 300 square feet per parking space. So, and that included the aisle? So maybe that was, was something that we didn't pick up on when we revised.
Well, we never revised the parking calculation section.
At all?
No, just the design of the facilities.
I thought we clarified the spaces.
We did not.
Okay.
Just, just the design of the spaces.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could jump in, I feel like there's a lot of moving pieces here. Um, and in my mind, the easier way to look at this would be to, if we ought to not grant a waiver and go through a site plan, my thought is each unit has a defined use and that's what is approved. And then any use that falls in those categories, they wouldn't have to come back to us. Correct? Because it wouldn't be a change of use at that point. So if we approve the use as retail, any retail use, regardless of what they're selling, they're good.
That's correct.
I just feel like, um, my concern about the waiver process, and I understand as a small business owner myself, I understand where the applicant's coming from. And I hate to put them through any more of the process than we really need to. But from the board's perspective, I just, I have a tough time getting my head around how many spaces, aisle widths, how all this fits together, especially where we have a couple of uses that aren't quite determined yet. I think from my perspective, it'd be easier to look at a plan that says unit one is retail, unit two is service. And then we can look at the whole thing and say, yeah, we can grant a waiver and as long as these are the uses, they don't have to come back to us. Or no, we can't do the waiver. We really need to go through a site plan. And then if we approve that, that arrangement, then they only need to come back to us for whatever use would change in the building. Um, and in terms of the site plan process, I mean, we're waiving quite a bit here in terms of parking, pavement, stormwater, drainage. I mean, there's a fair amount going on there. I, I don't disagree that these uses are similar to the past use of the property. Um, but it does seem like there's a potential for more traffic, more runoff. Um, and I can think of a couple of properties where we've had issues. One of them, uh, is right down the street where I feel like, um, the parking isn't adequate for the use. But, um, just my two cents on the situation.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. Yes, please.
I, I would completely agree with Mr. Cole. Um, and while some of the uses are the same, I mean, that building was primarily retail, a, a pizza place with four tables is a very different use. I'm not unwilling to grant, you know, some waivers, however, without clearly identifying exactly what all of the u- uses are in all five units. I'm leery to do so. Um, I agree with Mr. Cole's recommendation that the uses be defined and a site plan review process go forward with those identified uses. And if they change, then those units would have to come back.
Well, thank you for that. I feel very similar to that. Um, it, it does seem to me that there's some, some wasted space in this, in this pavement. Um, where there could be, it, it looks like at least five more spaces could be gained. Uh, you could restrict the, uh, access, um, put curbing there and, and spaces against it. Um, this stretch of Mass Ave is already extremely heavily trafficked. Um, anybody who tries to come out and turn against a lane, uh, in, on either side, I'm sure is aware of it. Um, th- there's just, there's so many questions right now that I am, I'm, I'm also reluctant to grant the waiver.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Certainly.
So my question to you is, because it seems like every time we try and do anything, we run into a wall. So basically, like I said, we have an architect, an architect right now working on the actual separating of the, of the old Grand Rental Station. Um, my question to you is, can we continue separating these units? And then let each indiv- individual tenant come to you? Um, or do you want a full site plan approval as if this place was never even developed?
Um, hm. Uh, we handled that before, Adam. I believe when it, when it was 10 Mass Ave, that it was just the one individual came.
He did. He, it was one individual came and then when the antique store closed, the gentleman who did the detailing came individually, uh, and then the, um, pet store came separately because the smoke shop had taken over the entire remainder of the other building.
So the pet store is the fun stuff, right?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yep.
Uh, 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 you can do that. Uh, I think, uh, it, it, it's certainly possible to make that work. Um, it can, uh, at that point, you need to start allocating spaces as part. I, I would think you would have to have some control over who gets what spaces. So that, uh, when they approach the board, there's a, an accounting for what spaces go with what units. Uh, not that that's the only ones that they can use, but so as a property owner, you have some, uh, idea of how, how your space is allocated on site. Um, but I, I mean, I guess in, in theory that could work. Um, the use that you were given a special permit for though is the shopping center, which is all of the units functioning as one building.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Unless we have, uh, we have like a specific three tenants that have already, do you understand what I'm saying? We're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, because tomorrow, the ten, unit two and unit three might say, you know what, this is taking too long. We don't wanna do it. So then, do we have to come before the board again? That's what I'm asking you, like, is there a way to actually start the process, getting things done? And, and then ask them for permission when we know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about the dog.
Oh.
And, and then if there's a way of each individual tenant making sure that they're allowed to do what they need to do.
Mr. Chair, could I jump in here?
Um, yeah, but I think they just asked Adam a question, so let him, let him think about it and I'll let you speak.
Okay, I'm just, I'm wondering if the applicant could come back to us at our next meeting and just simply define the uses and realize that it's a little bit of a moving target. But take your best guess and don't, they don't need to be defined as a nail salon. Service, retail, whatever it is, just so we can get in our head around the parking calculations and then determine whether or not we're okay with the waiver.
But those are the uses. So we're looking at service on three, four and five and a pizza place with four tables at two. and a pizza place with four tables at two.
Okay. So what about unit one? Are we?
Unit one right now is exempt from this whole equation. I know that you guys are listening to them and that's a whole other situation that could take years and years and years. We're not dealing with unit one right now.
But I think for and from my perspective, I would be more comfortable granting a waiver that defines unit one as something. And I don't know that it makes any difference whether they're selling marijuana or candles.
So then it's a retail space.
Right? And under that understanding, do all these parking calculations pan out? I guess is really.
According to the equation in that, in that section of the parking code, they do.
And Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the marijuana use comes to fruition, they are going to have to come before us.
That's correct. They'll need to come to this board for a special permit to operate. And as part of that, they would be required to amend the site plan.
Okay, so theoretically, we could grant a waiver, allow the applicant to proceed. And then as the marijuana use comes before us, then they can go through the whole formal process at that point.
And I would recommend to the board that if you are going to grant the waiver as part of the motion, that you condition that the waiver would not apply to any potential cannabis retail in unit one, just so it's written on paper and included. I've spoken with Stacy and she does not seem to be worried about that. Understanding that that is a whole separate approval process in and of itself that will take on its own life as it gets going.
I agree with you completely. I think if we do that, it should certainly be in writing. So there's no misunderstanding that this waiver then circumvents our marijuana bylaw. So.
So I'm still unclear, excuse me, on the exact nature of there being enough parking. In that, and this would be, I think, my biggest hang up right now, based on everything that's been said. Where we have those twelve spots in the rear that are currently used in the calculation for total parking. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe they are. Yes.
Okay. And we know that those twelve spots, well, let me rephrase, we don't, we do not know that those twelve spots are currently accessible in an appropriate, well, we know they're not currently accessible in an appropriate way because they either need to be employee only or signed for one way. And we don't know if they can be effectively signed for one way, or at least the board doesn't know because what we have in front of us doesn't really make it clear about how the snow storage works in practice. I know you're saying it's different.
It really is. I mean, unless you actually see it, this is the way that it was drawn in. And like I said, initially, I was going to give you the plan that did not include the snow storage. I thought I was kind of being like, just, oh, like, this is where we can snow, store the snow. But it wasn't shown adequately because there's more than enough space to go behind the building, from the left of the building, behind unit one, to reach those twelve parking spaces. Absolutely, to go to them from the front of the building, you would need to go one way. There's no access for two vehicles on that, on the right side. So the fourteen and a half feet, absolutely not. As a matter of fact, if you tried to do two vehicles, you would fall on, you know, into the ditch of the other property.
Look, so this is where I think I would just need, I would need a little more detail to see because when I look at the plan, what it looks like to me, and I'm not a civil engineer. So I understand that there may be things I'm reading incorrectly. But it, I don't see, I want, I don't see the blacktop put on the, on this map here. And I also don't see if the blacktop being there, how you can access it with that number of parking spaces because it looks like the parking goes right to the edge and you wouldn't have the correct clearance to get a car through with that.
Which side are we talking about? I'm sorry, which side are you talking about?
If we're looking at the twelve parking spots rear area, yep.
This is not a blacktop area back here. It's, it's like a crushed stone. Because we were close to the river and we didn't want to take any chances on that.
Makes sense. Okay. But actually specifically where the hand is now, that looks like another parking spot. And I don't know that there is, if there is sufficient clearance there for a car to get through if all those parking spots are being used.
And if this was snow storage is what you're saying.
Let's assume that there's no snow storage issue whatsoever.
Okay.
And I'm, and we're doing the one-way parking and I'm just going to pull up.
Oh, you're saying when it comes in to park in there, there's not enough space.
I'm saying I don't see that there's enough space, but I don't know every measurement here and I don't know the full layout, so.
By looking at it, I understand what you're saying. Again, I don't know, I didn't draw this plan, obviously. I'm going by what they gave me.
I'm thinking, for me, I would need a little more info and that could come from the plan or that could come from others on the board saying, no, Matt, this is the way X works and that's fine. And there are those of you with more experience than me in that regard.
No, Matt, thank you for that. You brought up another good point is that they do need a turnout. That space in the very corner, ten percent snow storage, that space there needs to have a turnout. There's no way for that person to back out of the spot and drive out of that parking area. I mean, it is thirty feet instead of the typical twenty-four, but. And if that car is in fact parked there, then there's, there is no access to the, to the snow storage area to drive through.
Is that considered a parking spot though, right there? One, two, three, four, five, six, eleven.
Yeah, because there's five here and there's seven here.
Again, because those lines aren't drawn. The front lines are drawn, these rear lines are not drawn. Because like I said, it's currently on on like a crushed stone. If that, if we remove that, I believe that there's still enough space according to the equation. If somebody could tell me that I'm wrong. So if that one, if this particular one where the hand is was removed and that was only eleven spaces in the front, we still have extra spaces. Because if you look to the left where the last parking space is, and I don't know how to put a hand there, do we, can we, oh, right here. So if you look right there, can you see that? Where my arrow is? Or can you not see it on your screen?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so if you go to where it says jersey barriers on the left.
Yes.
You, we were in, when we actually did the parking plan, we were in the process of getting some more land here. So we did not include this space in parking. There are no lines above this last line of the jersey barriers. So from there, so where the nineteen point four feet is, there's one more space above it. But then there's room for more spaces, which we did not include because that land wasn't part of our property. Currently, we have a lease for it now, which I have in hand if it's something that you guys need.
Good, yep.
I have a couple of questions. Adam, based on the uses that are in front of us, three service uses and one takeout use, what's the required amount of parking?
So, well, I'm going to do it backwards. So I looked at, I listened to what everyone said and currently the building is sixty-nine thousand square feet plus, just over sixty-nine thousand square feet, or sixty-nine hundred.
Six thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, sixty-nine hundred, sorry. And if you were to take unit two as a pizza place with four tables and six delivery drivers and take out ten parking spaces, that's eighteen hundred square feet, but let's go and use three hundred square feet to be conservative. Like Matt was saying, so that's three thousand square feet. So that leaves the total parking area to twenty thousand four sixty-nine. If you divide that by three, which is the backwards formula, you get six thousand eight hundred and twenty-three. So it, taking out ten parking spaces at three hundred square feet retains enough, almost enough parking area to cover the entire building as retail in and of itself.
But we're not asking for unit one.
I understand that you're not, but.
Okay.
By simple numbers, it works out. If we were to look at it the other way, unfortunately, these aren't broken down by unit size.
I can get you the unit size on.
But you know, you know what, unit one, how much, how, how big is unit two would be the only thing I need.
I'm going to get that for you, Adam. Give me two seconds. Can I have that booked, please?
Yeah, I'd like to understand the score associated with each unit and the number of parking spaces based on the proposed use.
Okay, so unit five is currently eleven hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
Okay, hold on one sec. Eleven thirty-eight?
It's point oh two, but I'm giving you the rounded number.
So that would be three thousand four hundred and fourteen square feet of parking area.
Unit four, which is the barber shop, is five hundred and ninety-four square feet.
So that would be one thousand seven hundred and twenty.
The pizza place is fifteen sixty, fifteen seventy square feet.
Okay. What about unit three?
I'm adding it right now because here it's showing it differently. Sorry, bear with me.
That's okay.
Some map. So unit three without the storage, see the storage behind it?
Yep.
Is eleven thirty-eight square feet. With the storage, it's fourteen nineteen square feet.
I believe storage is excluded.
That's why I didn't have it together. And actually, the unit five, the number that I gave you does include the storage because unfortunately, on my plan right here, I don't have it separated. But I don't think that that makes a big difference anyway.
Okay, so give me one sec. And then unit one is eighteen seventy-four.
All right. Unit one is eighteen seventy-four, correct?
Okay, so unit one would need five thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet of parking area. Unit two, if we were to look at it as
A pizza place with.
Pizza place with four tables, that would take three thousand. And you said three is eleven thirty-eight? Without the storage?
Eleven thirty-eight without the storage, correct?
So that would be three thousand four hundred and fourteen. Unit four would be one thousand.
Five ninety-four.
Yep, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square feet of parking. And then unit five would also be three thousand four hundred and fourteen.
And the pizza parlor is only three thousand?
Because it's, it's only, you only need one space per table. And I calced it at ten spaces to make adequate delivery space. And I upped it from one hundred and eighty to three hundred square feet to be conservative.
And the employees don't come into play?
Not in our parking calculations.
Well, I've noticed a couple of things that have come up in the conversation as well. And I didn't ask the question and I'm not blaming anybody, but it's a little bit misrepresentative to have the twelve parking spaces in the rear with the same striping as the parking spaces in the front if it's not striped. And site plan review is, is not only looking at parking calculations in far as our bylaw, but it's also looking for accessibility, ease of maneuverability and safety. So I believe that we could be more stringent on the parking regardless of the requirement in the parking bylaw just because of the safety of the site. Is that correct, Adam?
No.
It's not?
You can, you can shape the design, but you cannot require things above and beyond what's within the bylaw.
Okay.
So if you, and you know, so my calculations based on the square footage of the units and the uses has a need of seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet of parking area.
All right, but I am a civil engineer and I, I'm not, I'm not considering the forty-three foot wide aisle to be parking area. And our bylaw says that?
It does. It considers it as part of the parking area, the three to one ratio. As I understand it from reading it and working with it, is that that's intended to take all parking facilities into account. Space for the car to park, space for the car to maneuver in and out of the space as well as in and around the site. This was the issue we had at four hundred Electric Ave with the way that, that it was, it was laid out and calced. Figuring out how much space they actually needed and where it got, where it got included and what, what fell into it.
So looking at this site plan, I had assumed like the chairman that the gray areas were paved. Now I'm hearing that they're not. The twelve parking spots in the rear are not paved. The parking spaces in the front are paved, but the area to the side of the building that has the jersey barriers but doesn't have the lines, is that paved or not?
Yes, it's all paved.
So that entire area is paved. The area in the back is not.
It is not. And like I said, we repaved the whole front area. We were very concerned because of the water in the back and that's why we had the crushed stone. Now, when I say crushed stone, it's not, it's not like crushed stone that you can, like, it's plowable. It's just not straight pavement. It's just very crushed. I don't know what it's called. Everybody, everybody's giving me different names of what it's called. You would have to look at it. It's definitely not paved, but it's, it's.
What, when you say the water in the back, what was going?
There's like a little river or something running in the back. I don't know what it is.
Has your, have you gone through conservation for this?
We have, we have not.
Well, that raises a concern. I mean, if there's a.
Conservation already signed off.
Conservation.
For the building department.
Conservation had signed off on the initial zoning board.
The zoning board.
Yes, they had signed off on that.
Well, one of the concerns I would have, Mr. Chair, is depending, as you said, about safety, et cetera, about the parking. I don't know what the square footage area is of those twelve parking spots in the rear. But I do have some concerns, as Mr. Brenner pointed out, with the snow storage and with the accessibility to that parking space on the end. I'm not sure that that could be a viable parking space, but I'm also concerned if there's a water issue back there, whether it be a perennial stream, a regular stream, I'm not sure what it is. I'm concerned if that area were paved in the future, we're creating more impervious area and are we causing an issue with stormwater? And are those parking spots accessible as parking spots if there is truly a water issue back there?
There is not a water issue because the, this part, the parking spots in the back are way higher. They're a lot, lot higher than the water level, which isn't even on our lot. We just didn't want that to be an issue. That's why we did not pave with asphalt in the back.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In going through this discussion, and we came up with a number of seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet of necessary parking area. The area noted is twenty-three thousand four sixty-nine. The area to the rear where those twelve parking spaces are is about forty-eight hundred square feet. So if that were removed, the parking area in the front or the side of the building would comply with the zoning bylaw.
For the four units?
For the five units.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, exclusive of one being cannabis retail. I I I think what the board's trying to do, Stacy, is to give you, um, the ability. If, for whatever reason, um, the cannabis retail falls through, to have a fallback of a, another space that's already within the retail designation.
I understand, Adam. For me, I'm gonna tell you, as far as the Hupka Dacus family is concerned, if I have units two and three rented, then I can cover the cost of this building. That's my concern right now.
Mm-hmm.
So to me, if that back unit never gets rented, and I have it there to store my car, I don't really care at this point. To me, I'm thinking if I have that front section right now for the next two, three, five years, that I will be able to pay for this property. So I understand that you guys are trying to make that. I just don't want the cannabis to be a reason why I do not get this, um, this, um, what am I, this waiver? Because I didn't want them to be part of it. They could be, and we've spoken, Adam, they could be two, three years out. Like, I didn't buy this building to sit on it for two to three years or four years or five years. And if that's something that's bothering you guys, I can take them right off the table right now and say, no, they're not doing it. Like, to me, that's not the issue.
I I think the issue is more on on the the layout and and how the facilities fit together for the board right now. There are some questions they have unanswered. Um, specifically revolving around the twelve spots in the rear, access and egress to and uh, how they would impact any potential wetland resources to the rear of the building.
Right, but you just said also, if you don't even have the twelve spots in the rear, that there's still enough space in the front of the building. We just, we just leased six thousand square feet. Sixty-five hundred square feet from the Mackies on this side, on the side where the Jersey barriers are. Um. So that if there's any problem that we have that, and again, we didn't add the line so that it wouldn't be something, because we weren't sure at the time. Uh, when I came to you, if that was gonna be, I know that we were speaking about it when I came to you, but I, we hadn't finalized it, so I didn't want to make that as part of this.
Mm-hmm.
But we have a.
So basically, we, uh, we'd like to know, what is it that we can do to make it that you guys are happy with what is there now? Rather than going to a full site plan, which when I looked at is kind of like you're thinking that's something that's not developed and you're starting from the beginning, which obviously we're not.
So. Adam, you said the twelve parking spaces is forty-eight hundred-ish square feet?
Correct. Sixty-eight by seventy.
Okay, uh, did you include? Uh, I'm just trying to get my mind around this, because I I I want to see a way for this to work, um, because I want to be good to businesses in the town. Um, but did you include in that the the access road on the right-hand side of the building?
Uh, no, I I essentially drew a square. Here.
Okay. Because. Excuse me, my, my only concern is that 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 area still also isn't usable for parking without some kind of access because we know that we're limited to one way.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I mean, it sounds like we may be real close to the ballpark for all five units anyway.
Now, is the problem the access to the back? Because if you want, we can actually close that off, so there is no access from the front to go that way. You know what I'm saying? So that this alleyway to the right of unit five is not used at all.
Mm-hmm. Uh, and I think if you were to look at this, there is the potential for parking in this area. And this area. Uh, this is a forty-three foot wide aisle. Our parking spaces are required to be nineteen feet deep. That would leave you with the required twenty-four foot aisle.
So she, she could still put parking along the building on the other side?
Correct.
Oh, that, but that still doesn't matter for the square footage calculation.
It does not. It just, it gives. It's a point of information that there are additional spaces where parking could, could be striped that would not impact circulation.
Mm-hmm. But when I I'm learning that I'm not a huge fan of this bylaw.
Neither was I when I was trying to figure it out. Mr. Brenner, neither was I.
Yeah, we definitely need to work on the parking calculations.
You guys tell me what you think would make you happy to make this work, and I will do everything in my power to do that.
Well, I mean. I don't, I don't even know that that dash line is actually the property line.
Which dash line are we talking about?
At the, at the, at the Mass Ave, at the front. Where you get the telephone pole, you've got the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now, you know that these. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that that even is the property line. Um, and and it it looks like. So, when it was a rental station, when it was a rental area, they needed that wide curb cut to get the equipment in and out. Now, if we're going back to retail and service, then we only need to get passenger vehicles in and out. You've got eighty-plus feet of, of open driveway, and you've got two, two-way entrances to the site. That road, that stretch of road is already very, very congested. There are multiple ins and outs. Um. I I would like to see it reduced to a regular driveway with one entrance and one exit. That would also facilitate you putting in more parking that was nosed into the, the frontage. Um, and.
Which is very easy to do, but again, uh, people are gonna go in and out, obviously, no matter which way they want.
I I think what Mr. Allison's saying is he, he's looking for some constructed barrier covering two-thirds of the frontage, leaving a thirty or forty-foot entrance for in and out.
One entrance only on one side, or a thirty-foot to go in and a thirty-foot to go out?
I I don't want to speak for him, but my, my impression would be singular.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's, he's pretty much got the idea. Uh, because right now, you've got the whole width of it is not paid, is, there's no curb from, from rounding to rounding. So you've got what I would say is over a hundred feet with one telephone pole in the middle. So, and we don't, we we cannot require you to reduce that because it is existing non-conforming. However.
But if it would make it work, I have no problem in reducing it, because that would reduce like tractor trailers going in on my property and turning around and doing all that.
Precisely.
But if that's, I I mean, if that's something that we need to do, we're not against it, and that's not a problem for us. Just let us know which one, and we'll do it.
But, but I, I don't know that we can, we can waive site plan approval in one hand and then ask you to do things on the other. How does that work, Adam?
Uh, I mean, you can, you could do that. Uh, it would obviously, because this is DOT's road, you'd need a DOT permit to, to alter the access. Um. If, and honestly, my experience with DOT is they're in favor of those type of things.
Right.
They look for properties to combine entrances. They look for properties to consolidate so that they have fewer, um, access points. It reduces uh, traffic impacts, it reduces, uh, it increases site distances and and makes everything safer in general. Um, it doesn't increase site distance, but it it prevents people from interfering with each other. Uh, so i- if the board were so inclined to condition that, um, the entrance be reduced uh, per approval uh, per DOT policy or or, um, the, the property owners, uh, pursue the reduction of width of the curb cut with DOT. Uh, I think ultimately what you have to consider too is that the, uh, length of time that that can take can be extensive. Um, I mean, it took how long to get the, the lights at, um, Walmart changed, uh, but.
Not only that, they're gonna require an extensively engineered plan.
Correct, and and I guess it's, it's up to the board to, you know, if you're willing to give the waiver on the condition that they do that, um, are you requiring that to be, excuse me, completed before occupancy? Are you requiring that just to be pursued uh, as you go, as they go forward? Would would be the big question.
Well, it, we're, we're looking for public safety here and and lack of congestion and 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 maneuverability um, on, on an already heavily traveled roadway. So. Again, I don't really want to delay, I don't want to, uh, negatively impact local businesses at all. Uh, that is one of the least things, one of my least interests. Um. I just want to create things that are, that are fluid and and appropriate and safe.
I do understand that, and, Mr. Allison, I swear to you, we, we are not, you know, we're not big developers, uh, we're, we're local people. We've been around this area for thirty years. We've had businesses in Lunenburg, we've had businesses in Townsend, we've had businesses in Leominster. Uh, none of these will probably be our businesses as it stands right now. But, uh, we take great pride in what we own, and and I understand all of your issues. You have to understand ours, that it seems like we've been chasing our tails for the past almost six months to try and, and make something look nice in the town of Lunenburg without impacting anything. We've tried our best. Uh, I can't imagine anything else that we can do. And and now it's getting to the point where, like, and again, I don't want to be negative. It feels to me like Lunenburg, and I hear it from people, is trying to push out businesses, and why would we do that?
That's, that's absolutely ridiculous, um, that, that Lunenburg is trying to push out businesses. Um, we've recently formed an economic development committee so that we can try to uh, foster our businesses and help them and come up with, uh, ways to improve uh, the ability to do business in Lunenburg. Um, I, I, I I, I've heard the same.
I don't, I don't mean to get you upset. I'm not saying it in a negative, like, I'm not saying it. I'm just telling you what I've heard, and everybody's like, oh, my God, it's so hard to do anything in Lunenburg. We've had businesses in Lunenburg. We've owned our own businesses in Lunenburg. And if we didn't, if we didn't like the town, we wouldn't have bought this property.
Sure.
And we're not trying to do anything detrimental to the property. We're trying to improve it. We're trying to make it look better. We're trying to bring some more new business into town. Uh, we're gonna bring in more tax revenue. Again, regardless of unit one, we're not even, that's not even part of the discussion right now. Um. We're just, you know, trying to do something for our retirement, something for our children, something for our grandchildren. We're not trying to do anything bad. And I believe, I believe as a, as a normal person who has owned things before, that there's adequate parking, and everything else was already in existence. Everything else was there. So the only difference is that grand rent rental station isn't there, and you're not gonna have the big trucks going in and out of this property to take out stuff or tractor trailers, removing rental equipment. It's gonna be your normal, typical passenger vehicles going in to get their haircut, going in to get their nails done. And and what I, I, we have proposed a pizza place, a nail salon, the barber shop and the pottery shop, all four units work together. They will all work economically with each other, and it'll be a great combination. We've, and and the poor people at unit four and unit five have been waiting from, you know, from back in July, from back in March, when we were talking with them, to be able to improve their businesses by having some more traffic in in this little strip area. So I understand your points of view, but you know, and and we've, I've already made it known that whatever you need us to do to make it work, we can do to make it work. Now, if you're gonna put us off a year to do, to go to the DOT, then that's not even fair.
We'll leave it like whatever was it before. We will never divide it. Just leave it as whatever was it before. If they give us hard time, just leave it whatever was before.
Scusi.
You know, just leave it like, you know, and not even divide. That's the, the other.
Fieje. So again, it, it, it's all in your hands. Obviously, we've said what we need to say. We've tried our best. I don't, I don't know what, what else to say.
All right, well, Adam is, Adam is obviously trying to, um, uh, get this waiver, um, through. I don't know how the other board members feel about it. Um.
I, I presented it as an option to the business owners. It's, it's something that we've done before. I don't know that, that me trying to get it through is, I'm, I'm presenting the board with the, the two sides of the option.
Fair enough. That's true. I, yep. Um. So, uh.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
From my point of view, the thing that I'm missing in this equation is clarity. There's a lot of back and forth in terms of what the potential uses could be, where the property lines are, with the vials, if some of the parking spaces are usable. Um. And without, I mean, if we were gonna go site plan approval with a project like this, there is a tremendous amount of engineering that goes into it, but I think doing a modest amount of engineering just to locate the building on the property lines, show the parking spaces laid out, show access points. I personally, if I own the property, I would be opposed to shrinking the entrances and making things one way or anything like that, because once you do that, you're gonna have a hard time undoing it. So, uh, you've got a non-conformity and, um, it's probably not as safe as it could be, but you may want to keep it. Um, but at least from my point of view, if there was some clarity that, like, a basic engineered plan that showed the building, property lines, the river in the back, the distance from the river to the parking lots, what's gravel, what's paved? Um, just so we can kind of get our head around exactly what we're waving. Um, I mean, I feel like, in general, we're, we're trying to help the business owner and help move things forward. We just, we need to have some confidence in what we're agreeing to waive in the process.
Very true. Very true. Yes, please.
I would agree, agree completely with that. I think that if we had a plan that, as Mr. Cole just stated, clearly showed what was paved, what wasn't paved, clearly labeled what the uses of the building were, the square footage associated with each use. Um, you know, the access around the sto- the snow storage area. Um. I would feel much more comfortable waiving a site plan. I, I'm not comfortable waiving it based on the plan that we have in front of us. Um, you know, delineated the, the leased area versus the owned area. Um, you know, those kinds of things on the plan. Then we can issue a waiver clearly stating that, you know, this is based on this plan and these uses. Um, but without that on a, on a plan and and without really understanding the parking situation, the, the traffic flow, um, I, I, I can't yet, but it doesn't mean that I wouldn't approve a waiver if we had all that information on a plan.
Okay, I, I'd like the sound of that. Um.
All right, so why don't you guys tell me what you want on this new plan, so that way you can not be doing this all night? Because you have other people to talk to.
I think Paula and Tanner covered it pretty well.
So, and and I apologize, I didn't write it down, so if somebody could, Tanner?
I'll, I'll get to you, I'll get it to you tomorrow, Stacy.
I appreciate that.
I'll send you an email with, with, with all of the stuff on it.
All right, so you guys are saying that if we have a plan that's engineered, oh, whatever you need on that plan, and we'll come right back.
And I think survey is probably really what you're looking at. To get a surveyor out there to do an existing conditions plan that denotes where things are and what the traffic pattern looks like, and I'll, again, I'll send you the list of stuff that, that was talked about.
And I would want to hear from the other two members, because you've only heard from two, heard from two of us, so.
Well, go ahead, Matt.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement. That hits to the same, the same concerns I had with just trying to really understand what's going on here. We've had a lot of back and forth. We've had a lot of back-of-the-napkin math. And the problem with back-of-the-napkin math is it's way more prone to errors. Um, something they can say, no, you can see here, here's all the listed square footage, here's how it's divided out. Here's what is and isn't being included. Will make it a lot easier to say, no, this meets all the requirements. Here's what is and isn't being included. Will make it a lot easier to say, no, this meets all the requirements. So it's not going to be an issue. So I'm fully on board.
Good. So as the last person to weigh in on this most recent topic. I myself probably would be less likely to want to waive it, given an engineered plan. With the understandings of the existing site and the posed uses, but again, I'm one of four, one of five, hopefully.
May I ask why you would be less likely to waive it?
This, this is my wheelhouse. This is what I do for, for work. I design sites like this and, and it just. The, the, the flow does not sit well with me. It's not, it's not safe. It's not practicable. It's, it's, it's just. I, I think it was a good rental station, but I think that when you, when you get. Four or five different uses in here, it's going to become a lot more congested than people would expect. And that's, again, it's just my opinion and, and, and please don't misunderstand. I love that we're getting new businesses in town. This is great. But I don't want to have more business at the expense of less safety and that's my concern. So please don't, please don't paint me as the bad guy.
No, not at all. I just would like to know what, what we could do to make you happy. I think I've offered that. At least twenty times tonight. Tell me what, what would make you guys happy and, and we're willing to do that. We've been willing to do it from the beginning. So if, if a surveyed plan is going to make everybody more likely to approve it, then surveyed plan it is. If there's something else that somebody else would like to suggest before we even get to the surveyed plan, then absolutely we'll go that route. Mr. Cole made it a good. I think I'm kind of, you know, giving you my firstborn right now, but Mr. Cole made it, uh, uh, made. The recommendation that if it was his property, he wouldn't want to limit that. Now again, you guys know better than I know. As far as the parking spaces go, I'm better at making pizza and, and, and serving customers. That's my, my part of it. So. I don't, I don't know if I want to, you know, shoot off my foot at this point. So. Again, I will get that, I'll, I'll get the surveyed plan and then I guess we'll have to meet again.
Okay, very good. I just, I, I made that last comment just to let you know that there's nothing is guarantee. That, that we're not guaranteeing you that we will give you this waiver if you come back with this other plan, which it kind of seems like. You're trying to set up and that's not going to happen. There, there's no guarantee. It's, it's not.
Oh, no, I'm not saying there's a guarantee, but if the numbers work on with a surveyed plan. Are you saying that that's not a guaranteed? Are you telling me to give up the whole? Thing and just say, wash my hands of, of it. Cause if that's what you're telling me, you might as well tell me now. Cause a lot of money has gone into it already.
Okay. So what I'm telling you is I'm one of four people tonight. I'm one of five.
And again, I don't mean to get you mad. I, I, I'm not here to get you mad. I just want an understanding. Because at one point you're telling me that you want a surveyed plan to see that these numbers work. And then you're saying me, if you're telling me if I get a surveyed plan, then that doesn't mean anything. So it's kind, you have to understand my point over here. I'm sitting here, wait a second, what do you want me to do?
All right. I guess I was just trying to tell you about the process.
Okay, to be clear, I keep hearing the word surveyed plan. I don't know that we're looking strictly for a survey plan. We're looking for an engineered plan that contains data on the, the. Actual number of parking spaces delineates the parking versus non-parking outlines, the, the motion around the snow storage areas. I want to be clear, we're not just looking for a survey plan.
No, and I want to be clear. I just, Mr. Bernie said that he was going to send me everything that you were looking for. Otherwise, if you'd like to give it to me now, I'll write it all down. I just wasn't writing things down.
I just don't want you to call a surveyor tomorrow and say I need a survey because that's not.
Absolutely not, no.
Speaking as, as one member and, and I absolutely respect and understand Mr. Allison's concerns. And I share some of those, especially with that wide area going out onto Mass Ave. But I also do want to roll businesses into town. This was an existing retail space. Clearly delineating what is going in the space and, and the, the parking requirements under the bylaw. I would be amenable to considering a waiver. If I had all the data clearly shown on the plan that supported that decision.
Thank you.
All right. So are we going to move on? Let Adam get to the information?
Absolutely. Yes. If, if you guys are ready, if you have any question, if you don't have any more questions, absolutely.
So Adam, how do we do this? Do we just continue the requests?
You don't even need to continue it because it's not a public hearing. It doesn't have advertising. When they have the plan, they can contact me and we'll get them back on the agenda.
So I mean, do, we don't need to deny it and ask them to come back? We just, just let it go? Okay. Okay. Very good. I'll, I'll ask the board, is everybody comfortable with that for now?
That certainly makes sense to me, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And the applicant, you're comfortable with the discussion?
We are. We thank you all for your time. I'm sorry if, if we got heated. We're just, it's been a long process. And it just seems like we're just going backwards rather than forward. So I apologize. We don't mean any ill will against you. We wish you all a very nice Christmas and.
No worries. You as well. I completely understand your frustration with our bylaws. We, we feel very similar in a lot of ways. But that's, that's what we've got to work with.
Yeah, absolutely.
So again, I appreciate your, your time and thank you and we'll look forward to talking with you again.
We thank you also.
All right, guys. Thank you.
Have a great night.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now we have the continuance of a public hearing for three sixty-one Mass Ave Bright Farms. They still with us or have they joined us?
They are still with us.
We're here. I feel like we've been through a lot together.
Yeah, you guys get front row seats. So did you get everything squared away?
Uh, Mr. I'll let Jeff speak to that. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering. We made tremendous progress over the last week and in my opinion, there's a few minor. Plan revisions that need to be made to fully make. The plans and the hydrology calculations consistent with one another. But nevertheless. The hydrology is in order and if the plan revisions can be made to reflect that, that's great. Otherwise, possible tweaks to the post-development hydrology would be warranted. A week ago, we were trying, I was trying to get the review letter out. There was just too much disconnect between the hydrology comps that were. The latest and greatest at that time and the site plans as they had evolved. And those have been addressed. The other major issue that I felt was having the plans clear enough. For contractor to construct the outlets of infiltration basin number one. Because there's a lot of elevation that the water's going to flow down to get from the outlet of the pipe to the base of the hill. The plans have also been revised to address that concern. I believe those were comment number. I forget the comment numbers, but, but that's the summary of my letter, Mr. Chairman. The letter I issued today, December fourteenth.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. All right. So. You, you mentioned a couple of minor revisions to the plans. Are those noted, noted in your response?
They are, Mr. Chairman. They are on page number four.
When did that letter go out? Because I didn't receive today's review letter.
Uh, it, it was this afternoon, Paula.
Cause I looked for it before the meeting and I didn't see it.
Yeah. It was about four o'clock this afternoon that I sent it out. The plans and so forth got to me on December tenth. I tried to get more done on Friday. That didn't work out over the weekend. I tried to get work done and. That worked out to some extent and unfortunately today I finished it up late in the day.
Yeah, it was just about four o'clock it came in. I didn't see it till I sat down for the meeting.
Did you, and that went out to all of us?
That went out to Adam and I trust he was going to distribute it.
And again.
I didn't expect that Adam would have seen it, unfortunately.
Okay. So, so Adam, you have not sent it out?
I have not. I can do that right now.
Could you, could you please?
Sent. So it's the bottom of comment twenty-six that those are the changes that need to be made, Jeff?
I'm sorry I missed that, Adam.
That's all right. It's, uh, the, the, it's comment twenty-six at the top of page four. Uh, that's on the screen that are the. Changes that, that you would like to see, see made to make everything add up.
That is correct. That is correct. And. And I've also got a new comment at the end of the letter, just some labels and pipes. That's, that's even more minor than these. I did speak with Chi Man to this afternoon after I issued the letter. And I don't want to speak for him, but I understand that they were. Had read my comments and, and felt they could make those changes to the plans, but I'll let Chi speak to that.
Uh, yes, I did talk to Jeff earlier and. After we review the, received the letter, we've gone through it and actually some of the comments, like the. The outlet structure on the basin number one, it's actually supposed to be only one trapezoid, but you know, we accidentally. Accidentally hit the multiplier by two buttons on the model. And we've gone back and checked the model again and I can provide those calculation to Jeff. Again, just one trapezoid where per outlet structure is going to work. And we've got more than one foot of freeboard on those numbers. And we talked about the rainwater basin. We basically, some of the revision did not. Get on the print, supposed to add the six inches to the top of the basin, which make us. Able to have more than one foot of freeboard. That the point will not. Spill, well, the water would not spill off on the emergency spillway. So those are all minor tax changes. And also the, the, at the end of the comments about the pipe labeling. We actually did that on the print that was electronically submitted to Jeff. But you saw my hot copy with the markup with say thirty inches. I, I did catch that and we made that changes on the, on the print set. That was electronically submitted to you.
Super. So it sounds like all the ducks are lining up. Do we, what do we have for questions, comments, concerns from the board?
I'm just reading, I'm just reading the letter.
The only comment I had was in reviewing the draft decision, there isn't a condition. For a third party monitor and I know we've done that in the past with stormwater permits. So I just. Wanted to bring that up, but it seems to me like all the other engineering aspects are in order.
And I would concur with that.
Go ahead, Paula.
I just, the revisions that need to be made. If you look at page four, where it talks about the emergency spillway. Need to be revised such that water does not pass over the emergency spillway. So the. Emergency spillway on the top of the berm for the rainwater collection basin need to be revised. Can we do this decision and include those conditions or how does it work as far as making sure these corrections are done?
Uh, you can require that we receive a letter from Jeff acknowledging that all outstanding comments have been. Corrected.
Okay. I don't have a huge issue with the other issues, you know, the pipe labels or, you know, those kinds of things, but.
And if you're concerned about the freeboard specifically, you could call that out as its own condition.
Yeah, there needs to be at least one foot of freeboard from the one hundred year peak water surface. I, I mean, I think that should be a condition. The other issues, I don't have a problem, you know, moving forward with the decision. Based on getting corrected to, to Mr. Walsh's satisfaction.
Okay.
To Mr. Cole's comment. I, I think the only projects we've required third party monitors on stormwater permits have been. Large scale solar projects where there's. Open area on slopes and a fair amount of deforestation. We can cert, that's, that's why it wasn't added to this. We can certainly add that if that's something the board wants to do.
Um, I think given the back and forth somewhat contentious nature of the stormwater out there, then maybe that might not be a bad idea.
And if I may, the size of this project, the land clearing, the grading and so forth. It's not unlike some large solar projects that actually also not only call for clearing of trees, but regrading. So I, I think it's consistent with past practices I've heard described this evening about solar projects.
Thank you for that input.
So is that one more thing that we're putting into the decision?
Uh, I would, I would like that in there. Anybody feel strongly against it? Or for it or?
No, I would agree with it.
Uh, would you like us to use the same individual we've been using?
I mean, I don't, I don't have a preference. I guess it depends on availability and so on.
So I'll just, I'll, I'll put it as a. I'm drawing a blank, uh, as just a general third party monitor and we'll, we'll. Uh, reach out to Mr. Christopher and if he's unavailable, we'll find a, another acceptable individual.
Very good. So we're. Moving towards, moving towards an end result. So we've got the condition that they should be. One foot of freeboard at the hundred year storm, the third party monitoring, the. Up to. Passing muster with, with the review engineer. What else?
Uh, the other eleven that are already in there.
I'm good.
The board should decide if they're going to place construction hours and what those are.
What are they normally?
It really does depend. Often it's going to depend on how close to a butters they are. And the scope of work being performed. It could be anywhere from seven to five to eight to three, Monday through Friday. Uh, it's often anywhere from eight to noon to eight to four on Saturday. Uh, and it's generally no construction on Sundays or state or federal holidays. So that would be condition four.
I guess my only input on hours would be, I know there's a couple of butters at the very rear of the property. But given the. but given the fact that Hanaford and Walmart are receiving truck traffic essentially all hours of the day, um, I don't see why we couldn't say seven to five Monday through Friday and then whatever seems reasonable on the weekends, but that's just a really busy part of town naturally, so I don't know that the construction necessarily had that much in that particular site.
And I, and I believe they did say they're not expecting to, to need to blast. Which would be another, another application anyway, but um.
I would say seven to five on the weekdays and eight to four on Saturday.
I, I think I'm fine with that, but I just want to verify that we're talking about the rear of butters. And I'm trying to reconceive of where they are in relation to the property because that is a busy area of town, but uh, you could be abutting this property and still be pretty far from the noise of Hanaford and everything else.
They're actually to the east of the project. Um, they all have Chase Road addresses. Um, they are south and east of the water tower on Pope Road. Uh, so you access these lots um, through Chase Road between Northfield and Mass Ave.
Alright, so, so I have a question, um, probably for Sean. Uh, the construction entrance, is that going to be there at Hanaford?
Well, there's two, two related issues there. Um, one is that we have a easement modification pending with Brixmore Property Group. Um, the easement, we are a lot, well, in theory allowed to use, um, that comes off the construction, that comes off the driveway entry from Electric Avenue. I don't know if it's called Electric Avenue on the other side. I just like to say Electric Avenue because it reminds me of the 1980s, the Navy Grant. But um, uh, the um, that easement uh, didn't allow construction traffic. So there's an easement that allows you to, you know, have your business there. But you couldn't build a business there because you're not allowed to have construction traffic across the easement, which seems a little ridiculous. So we're getting, we're getting a modification to that easement. However, it's still possible um, that we enter, um, construction traffic enters from the used car lot because um, it, it didn't come to my attention until recently that the used car lot actually doesn't own its own driveway. Under the A and Rs, when everything's written in the, the, you know, the, the purchase, the purchases made and things are, are all legal and done, the used car lot will own its own driveway, but right now it's part of Steve Powell's lot, so we can enter there and go up the hill. Um, and that's where they brought in um, some of the stuff to dig pest, test pits and stuff. So I guess I would say there's two possibilities. Most of the stuff that comes up there is gonna come and stay. It's gonna be machinery that just stays. I don't anticipate a ton of traffic um, in the early stages anyway.
Right, but you got 15 acres of building to build, so.
That's right. When the building materials come, there's gonna be a lot of, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of traffic.
So I, I would.
Not by Mass Ave.
No, that's fine. I, I was just confirming that, that there wasn't an alternate, like maybe using Pope Road or coming off of Northfield somehow with an agreement of some sort, but um, like, so it's all gonna be off of, off of the 2A or the 13?
One of those two. And I, 2A actually I think would be a relatively, probably the least of the objectionable options, just because coming off of um, 13 there is a little dicey with the, the merge and the, the everything. I mean, Pope Road has its own issues with some residential. I don't know what you guys think. I just think it's probably the easiest throw to first to come in off of 2A.
Okay, so my, my only concern was if, if, if it was gonna be Pope Road, I think that would be one or two residences that would have but that access?
Yeah, we'd rather not use that. That wasn't part of our plans anyway.
Very good. Um, do we need to make an, another condition upon the construction entrance being off of 2A or State Road? Can we do that?
Uh, you can, but if the easement negotiations go adequately, one would think Hanaford would actually be a better construction entrance because they would be using.
That's off the 2A.
It's, well, it's off, it's off the service road from, I mean, depends on what you consider off 2A, but yes, it's off the service road that goes out past Hanaford.
Uh, honestly, I would, I would think you would be better to make a negative condition that Pope Road shall not be used to access the site for construction purposes.
There you go. I like that better.
That's fine.
Alright, so what's that, five new conditions tonight?
Four.
Four. Okay.
Are we ready to make a decision?
I, I think so. I don't know how, does everybody feel confident with the uh, with the uh, conditions?
Are we, I'm comfortable with everything. Are we going to proceed with kind of our process from previous hearings, close the public hearing, then vote the decision, but not sign it until our next meeting? Or how are we gonna do that?
Well.
I'm, I'm comfortable closing it and since we've had the decision and we've now reviewed it, I mean, how does that work out? And you're gonna add the additional?
We'll add the information from this evening, which is, you know, truncated minutes essentially. And it would include um, you know, the people who made the motions and seconds and it would record the vote. Uh, we have DocuSign. I've gotten stuff back from some of you. Some of your emails keep bouncing back to me, so um, we could execute the decision by DocuSign, uh, if it would save everyone coming into the office to sign. Um, if that's something that you're not ready to do, then we can prepare the decision and you can come in and sign it. Uh, my understanding was uh, the board wanted the decision prepared ahead of time to be able to uh, make any alterations necessary, add any potential conditions and then uh, vote and move forward with signatures as, as soon as reasonably possible.
I, I'm actually fine with voting tonight and approving a decision pending review of the additional conditions. But I don't know how quite we word that. If we just do, I'm fine doing DocuSign. I'm fine coming in to sign it, whichever ways everyone prefers.
So I'm, I'm more than comfortable coming in to sign, um, or Docu, whatever. Um, I think you've gotten mine back, so you know for me. Um.
I have a preference for DocuSign, all things being equal. Um, because we're currently in isolation right now, so.
So how do we move forward, Mr. Chair?
Well, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm not clear. We still, are we running two concurrent hearings on um, safety and stormwater?
Yes.
So do we need to close them both?
Um, you, I mean, you can close them at the same time.
Okay.
As long as the motion covers both. Honestly, you can make one motion that approves both since they both have the same voting quantum.
So we need one, one motion to uh, exit the, to, to, to close the public hearing, right?
I would make a motion to close the public hearing for um, 361 Mass Ave. For the storm, for the stormwater permit and site plan approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. It'll be a roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. We are officially closed that hearing. So on to discussion of conditions. We come up with five now, right? The negative on Pope Road was the fifth?
Uh, no, I have, I have 15 all day. The original 11, the one foot of freeboard on the basin of 100-year storm, uh, a letter from Jeff acknowledging that outstanding comments have been satisfied. Third-party monitor for stormwater, uh, and the Pope Road shall not be used to access the site for construction purposes.
Okay, I keep wanting to come up with five new ones. Um, how does everybody feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that. I would just like to review it before I sign it. And in terms of signatures, can we do half in office and half DocuSign, or do we have to all pick?
Uh, I think it's gonna be all one or the other.
Okay.
Um, and just, just a side note, do we have all the signatures we need on the A and R and everything previous to this?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
The property owner is in possession of the A and R.
Alright, so what do we need now? We just need a motion to include all the?
Motion to approve with any conditions.
Do, I would, I would make a motion to approve the stormwater permit and the site plan approval, the 361 Mass Ave LLC, um, applicant mass greenhouse LLC with the conditions as included, as stated in the 11 conditions. Do I need to read them out?
No.
Okay.
You can stipulate as distributed.
The 11 conditions as distributed and the five conditions, four conditions added this evening by the board.
Second.
That was Mr. Cole that seconded. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Uh, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
And I just want to be sure that was, uh, the motion was for both the site plan and the stormwater, Paula?
Yes.
Okay.
You have my DocuSign, right?
Well, what happens is I send a new document every time, so you'll have to re.
You receive confirmation.
I did re, yes.
Okay.
So you'll, you'll just re-sign what was sent.
Okay.
If you have not checked your email storage space lately, please just have a look at it and make sure there's some free space in there, so uh, it doesn't come bouncing back.
Okay.
I'm assuming that comment was for me?
I, I was trying not to point anybody out.
It's better if you just direct it.
I would have reached out to you personally tomorrow to make sure.
Oh, that's all right. You can throw me under the bus in public.
So, we're already talking about it. Did you try to empty your, um, your, uh, deleted?
Well, it, so the challenge I have is I only open the email on my phone. I.
That's challenging.
Yes, and I won't use a work computer because if planning board ever ends up in litigation, I do not want attorneys coming to my office seizing office equipment. For a planning. And so I literally have to delete every email like three times. Delete it and then go in the deleted folder and delete it again. But I will uh, put some time into it tonight and get it cleaned up.
Um, so that, that wrapped up uh, item five and item six on our agenda, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so I think that um, I think that Bright Farms should be really happy and I think that they're done dealing with planning board for the, for the time being.
Thank you all. You're a, you're a credit to your town. It's hard to imagine, um, hell, I don't know if Boston brings as much technical, technical expertise and thought to a, to a plan as you guys did. I appreciate it. You're a, you're a credit to Lunenburg. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Much. Best of luck.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Have a holiday.
Happy holidays to all.
You too.
Happy holidays. Thank you all.
Thanks for all the overtime, Jeff.
My pleasure. Glad to get it done. One more thing off my desk.
Excellent.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright, um, now we're on the minutes approval. We have 112320 and 112320 Bright Farms.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of 1123 for Bright Farms.
Second.
Okay, and that was, that was the Bright Farms one, not the general minutes?
Yes.
Okay, and any discussion? Uh, all in favor, roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram? Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. And take a motion for the uh, general minutes?
I would make a motion to approve the general minutes of uh, 1123.
Second.
Mr. Brenner, second. Um, no further discussion. Uh, roll call. All in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent. Um, now committee reports, uh, stormwater task force is still um, not meeting currently. The Agricultural Commission, um, we didn't, we weren't able to have our last meeting due to quorum. And uh, our next meeting is this coming Thursday. Uh, TCP Building Design Committee, um, uh, they had a meeting. I had to leave their meeting early tonight, in fact. Um, we're going over discussions with the um, the architect and the engineers and we're putting together um, what we expect to um, well, they had some questions for us and we're trying to figure out how we're going to move forward about pricing and deciding finishes and workspaces and, and uh, all that happy stuff. Um, and then Open Space Ad hoc Committee?
Uh, the Open Space Committee met on the 24th. Um, we met with um, Al Bartman from the Nashville River Watershed Association, who gave us an overview of the Forest Legacy Program. Um, and, which is a program that's used to identify and conserve environmentally important forest areas that are threatened um, by conversion to non-forest use. And so he kinda gave an overview of the program and although um, Lunenburg is not a core town to the Nashville, we do have tributaries to the Nashville. Obviously Nashville River is concerned about um, impacts to the river. Um, but they are basically looking for input from the Open Space Committee from any town and town body that is aware of information that would fit into that program. Um, it allows multitudes of communities to come together to conserve um, land in, in one application. Um, so he just gave, we're expecting some additional information from him, which we haven't received yet. Um, the, um, we talked about the possibility of adding layers to the existing GIS website for trails, um, and also a town properties layer. I've relayed to you guys a couple times that we were taking a look at town properties. Um, and we're looking to add that, to, to talk with the accessories about adding those layers. Um, the Conservation Commission is considering revising their land use policies and they actually had a hearing on that, that they continued. Um, and that. And that proposed revisions online. The member for the Conservation Commission just kind of gave, gave an overview of that. 360 Flat Hill Road, which is the orchard, unfortunately, we were not able to bring together entities to look at sustaining ways to keep that as agricultural, and so, we ended up voting to recommend that the town does not exercise its right of first refusal on that property. We did review the town-owned property list, continuing discussion on that, really just looking to find out what properties in that list meet our criteria, what properties might be of interest for, for other town boards, and then looking to have a much broader discussion later with all interested town boards. And that's it.
Excellent. I have a question about the, the presentation from Mr. Futterman about the Forest Legacy Program. Did he mention that town-owned property is eligible for that?
Really?
Well, there's some spec, okay, so I wasn't, I was in contact with one of the directors over at North County Land Trust.
Yeah.
They indicated to me that, this Jassy Brackhouse, she indicated that if it's under the care and control of the Conservation Commission, then it's already considered protected.
Right.
If it's under the care and control of other than the Conservation Commission, like if we had, if we had hundreds of acres of forest that was under the Selectment's control.
In town forests.
That would be eligible for that 75% reimbursement.
Really?
That's what I was told. And I asked the specific question.
Okay, I'll definitely talk with Brandon about that and bring it back to the committee.
Very good. Actually, I had opportunity to speak with Bob Peace the other day, and I mentioned that to him as well.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. So, capital planning?
Capital planning. Unfortunately, we couldn't meet last week because the agenda was posted improperly. The link on the agenda was incorrect, so we're meeting tomorrow.
Oh. So, that's going to be DPW?
Yeah.
MRPC?
MRPC and MJTC have a heavy amount of overlap, just due to the content. For the MRPC specifically, the, for the Conservation Lands, for the Conservation Lands Mapping Project, they've made more progress on that, and the maps have the sections here. Four new trail maps for Northwest Town Forest, Table Rock Conservation Area, Proctor Park in Clarksville. And the maps were sent to their town contact for approval. The, the town ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. They have, they are currently working on writing the report that will be presented for comment and edit to local officials and the public. That's, I think, the same as they were last time. Brought up at, so, the other thing of note is, much like town offices, the MRPC office is currently shut down effective December 3rd. Everyone's working from home. For those that might impact. The, and then came up for MJTC as well, there are multiple grants upcoming that we have potential access to. And I mentioned earlier, and we kind of got in, like, it was brought to our attention too late to do much of anything about, and we weren't sure if we had a lot of need in town for it, for the shared speed, the shared streets and spaces grants. But they're opening a new round for shared winter streets and spaces, which is open the next due date. It is a kind of set of due dates you can apply for. The next one upcoming is January 5th, but there's more. There's 10 million in funds the state is putting out for projects that will be funded there through May 31st. And this is, again, for creating those kind of, for doing small but meaningful impacts to the public area. Things like alternative parking, outdoor dining, or some of the classics that they've brought up before. So, that money is available to apply for grants.
Can, can we forward that? Do you have?
Yeah, I do have a brochure on that I can forward.
That would be great.
Yes, I will. And the other brochure I have, it's just actually an announcement I can forward as well, is Mass Trails Grants are available. They've opened up for the 2021 year. And the deadline for, for application for those is February 1st. I will send that to Mr. Burney as well, to send out to everyone. Because those are upcoming grants that might be of use to us in town. They're starting in on the tip process again, and they made a big deal about if we have transportation projects that we need to see addressed in town. We want to clarify those and make sure we're making a good deal of noise about them, because squeaky wheels will get the grease in the tip planning process.
Is that it?
Yep.
Excellent. I do have a follow-up question. I know that we got, I think it was just last year that we got the 26,000 trail grant. And are we, are we eligible for that every year? Does anybody know?
There, there is no restriction on recreational trails to not apply every year. You can continue to apply.
Great. Excellent. Well, thank you all for the reports. Moving on to Director's Items, Master Planning and Greenleaf Botanicals.
So, I got today the report and population projections that we contracted with Donahue Institute to perform. I did send them around to you all. I haven't had very long to sit down and look through them. I did a very quick initial blush, and they look much more realistic than what we had previously. I think over the next next 20 or so years, we're looking at probably a 25% population increase, give or take. But that was, and, and they actually did two scenarios. They did a declining scenario and a scenario based on a blended average of the previous 20 years. So, we have some things to look at. And in speaking with Susan Straight from Donahue, she indicated that with the 2020 census coming in the imminent future, once that comes out, she would be willing to have a conversation about potentially plugging that in, in place of the projections, and maybe rerunning the numbers based on that number to give us even more realistic projections. But that's three or four years down the road when the census numbers finally come out. So, you all have a copy of that. Let's start looking at that, and maybe into the new year, we can start to put the RFP out to get those other two chapters done based on these new projections, as long as there aren't any outstanding questions or concerns about the methodology or, or the outcome.
Excellent. Thank you. And just, just FYI, I think the town's population has more than doubled in my lifetime.
So, is that correlation or causation?
No correlation. I'm an only child and I have no kids.
So, and then Greenleaf Botanicals, this was alluded to earlier at 88 Mass Ave. They have met with the Board of Selectmen to introduce themselves. They have submitted a draft host community agreement, which was forwarded to town council and received some significant comments and was discussed by the select board at their last meeting on Tuesday, the 8th of December. There are still, it appears some outstanding issues, and my understanding is that the select board is, is uninterested in not going to take any action on the host community agreement until the community meeting has been held. It looks like that will probably be in mid-January or later, and currently, the business owners are looking at doing so through a Zoom meeting. Ultimately, it's, it's their meeting. The town is not facilitating or hosting. We're just looking to spread the word as, as much as we can to get everyone access who wishes to have access. And this will be a meeting where they're required to talk about what licenses they're seeking, what their business model looks like, and address comments, concerns, questions that the public at large has regarding their business and, and general operation.
Question about that is, could they try to get the use of an auditorium and, and something similar to a town meeting, since this is our first?
I guess they, they could. I mean, I think we're all living in a place right now where we don't know what that looks like going forward. You know, today, vaccines started being injected into people. I don't think there's any realistic expectation that more than a small minority of the population will be inoculated before mid-January. And I think we're starting to see larger cities and the state as a whole rolling back what's open and what phase of reopening we're in. So, I don't know that a meeting like this would qualify under something like a town meeting exemption for, for hosting more, more people than 10 at an indoor gathering.
Good point.
I mean, could they try to hold it in the stadium at the high school in the middle of January and have everybody outside, I guess theoretically? But I think you probably look at access issues that far exceed what Zoom could theoretically accommodate.
Yeah.
And I do see your point. It's difficult, and it's hard to do something like we're doing here with a bunch of people who have, you know, obvious concerns and questions.
Well, I mean, yeah, so the process has been bossed a little bit here and there, and, and it's fairly contentious, and and it was pretty much split down the middle. Oh, was it? Now I've forgotten. It was pretty close. Anyways. Good enough.
But, you know, I mean, the reality is it'll be this time next year at the most likely time for them to come back and see this board for special permitting.
Okay, very good.
I mean, you know, sometime between now and, between this time next year and into the spring of the following year.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that. So, our meeting schedule, 6:30, remote participation, December 28th workshop, subdivision rules and regulations. Yes.
I will not be in attendance at that meeting.
Okay. Can you, did, did we have something specific about the subdivision that we were going to discuss, or just?
No, I was going to pick a chapter and send it to you.
Okay.
Take a look at it and give any comments beforehand, but.
No, we'd be happy to hear any input that you have when you're not there.
Okay, thank you.
And then January 11th and 25th, it doesn't, doesn't look like we have much.
We don't as of yet.
Okay.
We can talk about parking calculations.
There you go.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, I mean, if you'd like, I have a draft somewhere tucked away that we can skip subregs and do parking at the next meeting. I'll defer to the board on that.
Yeah, I, 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 I would have sworn that we did something with those, because I complained about the 300 square feet when the high school came before us. But yeah, the, the way that's written is just nonsensical. All right, well, I guess we're at the public comment point of our evening.
There's no public here.
Unless anybody has anything to say, I would make a motion to adjourn.
I just had one quick comment, and I don't even know if this is possible, but would it be possible in some way, shape, or form to get like plan-sized copies of the stuff we're reviewing? I know in our packets, we usually get 11 by 14. But, and I don't want to make a bunch of different work for everybody, but like the Bright Farms thing, just kind of look at a lot of the stuff on screens and zooming in, and, I mean, I'm used to plan size and having a scale in my hand. So, and I don't know that we need it for like a simple A and R, but for some of this stuff, it would be really nice to get the plan size.
Back when I first started here, we, we did get plan size for everybody, and at that time, the board said, why do we have all these giant plans? They come in with this handy-dandy board. Why don't you just give us 11 by 17? And when we rewrote the rules and regs for site plan and subdivision, we codified the submission of 11 by 17 for the board. If this board wants to revisit that, we can do that. It's just a simple public hearing process.
Or we could get this tablet that we can zoom in on.
I think, I think even a tablet seems contrary to what Mr. Cole is asking for.
Yeah, it does sound that way.
I mean, it, and back when we were meeting in Town Hall, we had one plan view, and if there was something we wanted to look at, we could see it, you know, and I think that's part that is really difficult to look at. I mean, one of the Bright Farm documents I opened, the drainage report, was 230 pages. Well, I don't expect to get 230 pages printed for every single meeting, but, you know, the plans, especially with drainage calculations and watershed areas, it'd be nice to be able to look at it, that's all. And again, not for everything, but if we, I guess, for site plan approval. If, if we're going down that road, then we should have real plans in my mind. So, maybe that's something we do at our next meeting as part of the rules and regs.
Well, they're, they're separate documents, so the site plan, special permit, rules and regs are separate from the subdivision rules and regs. So, if, if that's a change you want to make, then we'll have to post a public hearing and advertise it, and we can do that.
Okay. Well, maybe we just put it on the agenda for next.
That's fine. Yeah, we can put that on and let the board talk about it.
Yep. That was it.
Is there any more board comment? No? Mrs. Bertram made a motion.
And I'll second it.
Excellent. Any discussion about adjourning? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Thanks, Dex.